You were at Key West like yesterday. Last week, oh my god. Time flies, we're looking at other people's Florida patients. I wouldn't mind being Florida now, or a general. This is one bad chair? Oh, we're gonna get this guy. Oh, that's it. I don't even think that this is the same one as the first. I think it's a different one, it's breaking over time. What we do is we put the heaviest person in the worst chair. Ah, sorry. That seems involved. Is there, is there one or more than one bad chair?
Just one.
Really? And it makes its way around the room. And then, and my joke was to put the absolutely heaviest person in the worst chair. It serves me right. Yeah, I'm not gonna, that's sick. I'll just, have people think I've lost composure. I know it's not particularly long, why is this cat coming up on the table? That's right. I can do city council all by myself, daddy. You got it, you got it. Please don't play. Ooh.
Call this meeting in order. Those in attendance, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us in this regularly scheduled June 6, 2022, city council meeting. As you come in tonight, the door which would be to my right would be all your left. As you walk in, there's a desk, there's a sign-in sheet on that desk. If you're a guest with us tonight, please sign in. City clerk, can I have a roll call?
Councilmember Soha?
Present.
Brainer? Beer?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Here.
Sharp?
Here.
Stuccio?
Here.
Pratt?
Here.
Sizer?
Here.
Mayor Stockford?
Here.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move into approval of agenda. I have one change to make to the agenda. I'd like to pull off item number A, an introduction of ordinances, public hearing, set public hearing in consideration for removal of TIPA member. Any other changes to be made to the agenda tonight? No, Jacob's on the zoning board. He submitted his resignation from the zoning board and has to be moved to the airport.
We can't hear.
I would like to put on there, discussion on citywide trash pickup. Can you put it out there as a discussion?
Okay, so do I have a motion to remove item number A and to add item number G, citywide trash up discussion. Citywide trash pickup discussion, discussion.
We can't hear.
We can hear you, Eric, now.
I wanted, I made a request to have citywide trash pickup put on the agenda for item G under new business. For discussion. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Do I have a motion to amend the agenda? Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Stuccio, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda? Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move into public comment on agenda items only. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. Please understand during this time, there will be no discussion between the council table and people at the podium. Podium is now open.
Hello, I'm Carla from Mooreport. So, my information was supposed to be on this agenda regarding my FOIA request, but somehow it slipped through the cracks even with a reminder twice. I am not happy about that. I wasn't sure if you said that Lance's thing's still on, is Lance's?
No, it's been removed. It's not on the agenda any longer.
Will it come back again?
Can you answer that question?
Okay. Well, I guess in that case, I'm gonna just regard what I have to say and so may be next time.
Thank you, Carla. Carla, your FOIA appeal will be on the next agenda. Katie, do you have a note on that?
Yes.
Okay, that was my call, Carla.
Thank you.
Gonna have a Carla.
Carla Shear. I am here to talk about H, the open air market for the Hillsdale Business Association, and we're asking for right-of-way usage for the parking lot, the lower parking lot of library again this year. And I just wanted to tell you that we're hoping that we get that and we try to bring more people into downtown. We open the market to everybody, so come down and visit us.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Just a question procedure, are they allowed to comment on the letters that have been submitted at this point?
Yeah, they're on the agenda.
Okay.
They're agenda items.
Alright, thank you.
Any more public comment?
So, thank you, Council. I stand here tonight for intellectual freedom. I stand opposed to any attempt to ban or censor public library materials. I am here tonight to ask the city council to remove Joshua Palladino from the public library board. He has proven to lack the ethical framework to carry out the duties that he swore out toll. As evidenced by initiating slanderous statements and writing to masses that he encouraged, encouraged to forward on to at least a hundred more folks. He, along with those he enlisted, have further perpetuated that slander. This has created a dangerous environment for those innocent of the wrongdoing, public servants simply trying to do honest work for our community, creating a liability to the city and yet another black eye for Hillsdale. And still, Mr. Palladino lies about his actions, no remorse, no apologies, and certainly no honor at all. And ultimately, that signals no regard for you as a council, no regard for the library, and no regard for the community's well-being. Mr. Palladino, for these reasons, has factually disregarded his, both, has disregarded in both word and deed, his obligation as a library board member. It should be immediately removed from the board. He is a liability, not an asset, to this community as a whole. I would encourage, in the future, proper selection, Mr. Mayor, of board members to seats, to decrease any perceived lack of transparency and truthfulness, to include selecting folks that have served on your own election committees and/or maybe your friends. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, madam. What's your name?
Tracy Fowler, county resident.
Thank you, Tracy. Appreciate you coming tonight. Just for your information, Mr. Palladino was a recommendation from the library board. So he wasn't hand-selected by me. The board held him in high enough esteem to bring him forward as a recommendation to city council.
Any steward of this council who would hold the ethical obligations of that seat, it has not done so. So I would further state, it is time for his removal for the sake of liability for those who sit there in the community as a whole. Thank you for your input.
Any more public comment?
Robert Eichberg, Sippio Township. My only question is, on the sale of the solid waste transfer station, what was the age path? And on the takeover, what kind of conditions are we gonna be warranting? Are we gonna be using, you know, defuncts from the city and then, you know, incomes of whatnot? I'm just wanting to get some addressing on how that is gonna be functioned through the, on new, you know, version. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any more public comment?
Dennis Wayne Scott, and these are my opinions, these are my opinions only. Has nothing to do with the city. But what I would like to know, we, we are based on a right to speak. We, our speech, what we wanna say, is given to us through our constitution. And at the same time, I have a question. Where, where did Joshua ever come forth with any type of harm or possible harm to anyone, but speaking the truth that was in his mind and in his thoughts? God gave us a right to be able to speak. We don't have any rights to take that speech away from us. And what he has done is that he has spoken his piece on what he thought was right. And he is trying to help the people, not hinder the people. It is not the opinion of all the people of Hillsdale that Josh was wrong. If it was his moral obligation as a Christian and as a man of God that he in turn has the right to speak the words that he spoke and to watch over our children as well as any of us here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any more public comment?
Joshua Palladino was right, y'all in the way was right, and I can't believe people are doing this to him.
Thank you, Lyant. Any more public comment?
Hi there, my name is Catherine Watkins. I am a county resident of Hillsdale Township. So I had a statement prepared this evening, but due to the sudden switch of agenda items, the comparison kind of is a little bit off at this point now. However, I still want to bring something up. So you guys had this on the agenda for Lance's removal over some lawsuits that he filed, which was separate from his board responsibilities. So now, I'm not a fan of Lance. I, I, I'm not here to defend Lance. Okay, but Josh, in his official position, which was representative of the library, which his responsibility is to uphold the responsibilities of the library, which is to ensure that the entire First Amendment is upheld as a government body. Therefore, he was in violation of that as representative of the library. His homophobic statements that he made while sitting at that table, yes, they were made, Mr. Stockford. I don't know if you went back and looked at that meeting and when I told you to look at that meeting, but yes, he sat at that table and said that pride parades support the murder of babies. Okay? So, the bottom line is, is Mr. Palladino has not acted in a way that is upholding his responsibilities to the ethical standards per the Michigan Library Trustees Manual, that every single library trustee is supposed to be held to. If you read the appendix on the ethics statement, he violated multiple areas of that. There is absolutely no excuse. And the fact that you sit here and, and you cite for Mr. Lachaway that he caused a damage to the city, the reputation of the city, and incurred costs to the city, and yet his was a local scandal in local news. Mr. Palladino's actions have now made national news. I don't know if you've seen the articles, but they're everywhere. Hillsdale is getting so much bad press because of Mr. Palladino. So, all I am standing here asking for is some consistency. End the hypocrisy. If you are going to come after one person for exercising their right to free speech separate from their board position, then you sure as hell should not be defending somebody's position of, of free speech, which it was not in their, it was not at the right point, because his free speech should be separate from his board responsibilities. If he wants to have that viewpoint on his time, that's fine. When he is representing the library, he is upheld to the responsibilities of the library. When he's not doing so, he needs to be removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Any more public comment?
Carla Shear again. I originally came because I wanted to talk about the open air market. But then, my husband read an article to me from the Hillsdale Daily News two days ago or three days ago, and I came to support Mr. Palladino, because I have not seen in the paper or read anywhere where there was a petition that was circulated amongst the parents of Hillsdale County or the Hillsdale City that said, "We abrogate our responsibilities to parent our children and teach them what we want to teach them." I think that it's okay for those books to be in the library. I do not believe it's okay for them to be in the children's section. And I am thankful to him, I don't know who he is. If he was here, I would thank him to his space, I don't know who he is. But I think he did the right thing for the parents of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Folks, please limit your trips to one to the podium. If you have two points to make, try to make them both at the podium at the same time. Thank you. Any more public comment?
Hello, CJ Tomcree, City of Hillsdale. It would be a real shame if everybody was always in agreement, wouldn't it? The fact that he was the only one on that board that sat alone, that's why we have multiple people on a board. If everybody was in agreement, we only put people on a board that was in agreement, what is the point? So, my point to that is, why would you take somebody off the board that has a different opinion as to what our community needs? Because yeah, obviously, he stands for other people in the community that maybe aren't as vocal. And so, my point to that is, are we really gonna eliminate everybody off of every board that doesn't agree with everybody? It just seems disingenuous. Thank you.
Thank you, CJ. Any more public comment? Regarding agenda items. Seeing none, we'll close the podium and move on to the consent agenda. In the consent agenda, we've got a truffle of bills, city and VPU claims of May 12th, payroll of May 12th, city council minutes of May 16th, housing commission minutes of March 14th, TIPA minutes of March 15th and April 19th, TIPA dawn theater minutes of May 5th, TIPA targeted development minutes of May 10th, Hillsdale College fireworks permit and noise variance request, right-of-way permit, HBA open air market, use agreement for HBA open air market, St. Anthony's Church Park use agreement for Owens Memorial Park, Richie Park use agreement, Stock Park wedding, application for July 3rd fireworks and another noise variance request. Any discussion on any items on the consent agenda tonight? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Support. Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Beer. May I please have a roll call, city clerk?
Councilperson Beer?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sizer?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Councilperson Soha?
Yes.
All approve, Mayor.
Thank you, city clerk. We will move on to communications conditions. Item A, library director resignation, and you guys are gonna have to give me one moment to get caught up in my packet. I apologize. Oh, I know the problem, it's Michelle's. One moment.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Councilman. Just about there. Okay, there's a, a letter to the library board of trustees in the City of Hillsdale from the former library director. She just stated that she received six grants. Each grant has given us the opportunity to better the library, bring new programs to the library. She speaks highly of her staff. She said sadly, "The controversy that has risen has caused me to question a few things following the April meeting and the first discussion of the issue at the library. I was questioning my job and the potential possibility of my being removed as the director." So she began to search for other work at that time. So she's submitting her letter of resignation basically saying that she doesn't like the stuff that's going on at the library. Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll move on to item B, a letter from Brianna Crawl. Brianna says, "Dear Mayor Stockford, I was in attendance at the library board of trustees meeting on May 20th. Kelly Preston said the meeting was needed when I was being aware of an amendment being proposed to the library policy by current member. Mr. Palladino drafted distributed a letter acting as board member calling on others to come and support the amendment to the library policy. This amendment was called an invitation to a lost lawsuit by the city attorney. Not only was the amendment not what the city stands for, freedom of speech and small town welcoming with open, open arms out, it was a clear violation of Library Bylaws and Open Meetings Act. I too sit on board in this community, domestic harmony, and I'm aghast at grossly inappropriate conduct of Mr. Palladino. I cannot imagine any board member being allowed to behave so unprofessionally without consequence. I'm calling for the immediate removal of Josh Palladino from the board effective immediately. He has damaged not only the reputation of the Hillsdale Community Library, but has cost us a phenomenal library director, Brianna Barton, who has brought nine thousand grains, whose actions in line have possibly cost us the children's library and Lauren Jones as well." And the reason that I'm reading these is because I was asked to read them by residents. So, don't normally read people's letters, for God's sake. There are two, there's a letter from Mr. Jansen, two letters from Mr. Jansen. One is a, looks like a quotation from, that's, that's fine, go ahead, Catherine.
On the first letter, honorable Mayor Stockford, members of council. Quote, "The city library director has begun to fill the library with CRT, LGV, sexually promiscuous books and displays. This statement, and Mr. Joshua Palladino put out to his friends and followers. This statement was not based on true fact, it was just red meat thrown out there and then the dog whistle, which created threats of violence against the library director and children's library. This reckless and dangerous conduct is unacceptable for a representative of the City of Hillsdale. Mr. Palladino was given the opportunity to apologize for this false, serious statement, which didn't cite violent reactions toward these city employees, but he did not apologize for this statement. As incumbent upon the city and as representative, provide a safe environment for our city employees to carry out their duties. Mr. Palladino's exaltation destroyed the sense of safety that is partially responsible for the resignation of, had these two, I guess, only the city librarian, civil servant resigned. Such behavior cannot go unchallenged. I am asking the mayor and the council to review his behavior and to terminate his presence as a library board member. This is reminiscent of Alex Jones, throw crap on the wall, see if it sticks, let's go with it. I'm not discussing whether or not he was right on his beliefs of taking himself out of the children's library. It's his behavior that is totally unacceptable. I'm sure Mr. Mackey would never allow any board member to disparage Kelly LaPresto or anybody else. We should never allow this for any board member to do so. The next letter I wrote, to honorable mayor and members of the City of Hillsdale Township, in view of the recent library board meetings, there appeared to be a question of accountability in following the ethics set forth by the Michigan Public Library Trustee Manual 2021 Edition. It's unknown if the city has ever requested its library board members to adhere to this standard. I am requesting that the City of Hillsdale adopt the Michigan Public Library Trustees Ethics Statement, copy attached, and request that all of library trustees swear to uphold the affirmation ethics standard as presented in this statement. Failure to swear to uphold this ethical standard could cause, could cause termination as a Hillsdale library board trustee. This is the statement put out by the Michigan Public Library Board. Public library trustees are accountable for the resources of the library as well as to see that the library provides the best possible, best possible service to its community. Every trustee makes a personal commitment to contribute the time and energy to faithfully carry out his or her duties and responsibilities effectively and with absolute truth, honor, and integrity. Trustees shall respect the opinions of the colleagues, not be critical or disrespectful when they disagree or pose a viewpoint different from their own. Trustees shall comply with all the laws, rules, regulations that apply to them and their livelihood. Trustees in fulfilling their responsibilities shall not be persuaded by partisan interest, public pressure, or fear of criticism. Trustees shall not engage in discrimination of any kind and shall uphold library pages' rights to privacy and the use of library resources. Trustees must distinguish clearly, correctly, clearly, in their actions and statements between their personal philosophies and attitudes and those of the library, acknowledging and supporting the formal position of the board even if they disagree. Trustees must respect the confidential nature of library business and not disclose such information to anyone. Trustees must also be aware of and compliance with Freedom and Information Laws. Trustees must avoid situations which personal interests might be served to financially benefit from gain as a result of their position or access to privilege, library information freedom, themselves or others. Trustees shall immediately disqualify themselves whenever they appear Trustees shall immediately disqualify themselves whenever the appearance of or conflict of interest exists. Trustees shall not use their position to gain unwarranted privileges or advantages for themselves or others from the library or from those who visit the library. Trustees shall not interfere with management responsibilities of the director or the supervision of library staff. And finally, trustees shall support the efforts of librarians in resisting censorship of library materials by groups or individuals. I'm asking the city council, ask the board of trustees to swear to uphold this ethics statement, which apparently, I've been told that's, one person said, I'm not gonna, I didn't swear to uphold that, I just swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the state and city council. I'm not obligated to follow the policies set forth in the Michigan Library Manual for the ethics statement. Any questions?
Any questions for Ted? Thanks Ted.
Thank you.
Also, there's these letters from the McRichies. Um, I don't know if you guys know the McRichies, they're, the library has their name on, but building, right? So they're advocates for the library and, uh, I guess you would say, benefactors.
Thank you for taking the time to read this letter. My name is Martha McRichie. I am no longer live in Hillsdale, I, although I no longer live in Hillsdale, I am proud of the fact that I was born and raised there and am a fourth generation resident. I have continued to maintain contacts and interest in the community's affairs. I have recently become aware of the proposal to restrict acquisition of some children's book and possibly some adult books. I do not want to see the McRichie Library stoop to becoming the community's big brother and decide what books can be read. If parents want to supervise or restrict their own child's reading, they should do so, but this should not be allowed at the expense of any other adult or child. I value intellectual freedom and hope that all members of the city council, library board would adhere to the principles of the Michigan Library Association. Their trustee manual states, the library board has the responsibility of championing the cause of intellectual freedom, which includes fighting censorship issues. I believe any concerns about the content of a book can be adequately and appropriately addressed using the procedure to remove a book from the shelves, which is already in place. Please keep me informed regarding these decisions. Martha McRichie.
And Lynn wrote, I am writing to express my feelings on the recent issues in the Hillsdale library. I was born and raised in Hillsdale, though I have been not, I have not been a resident for many years. Hillsdale had a huge influence on the person I've become and I continue to have an active interest in the community. The library holds a very special place in my heart. As a child, I went for a story hour more times than I can remember. As a teen, I researched high school papers and as an adult, after a phantom tragedy, I found refuge and comfort. During all these times, I would wander, picking up random books, not caring what section I was in, there were no boundaries of where I could go. If I didn't understand, I'd ask to learn more. If the book was beyond my comprehension, I simply put it back on the shelf. By no means was I unique. People of all ages and genders did exactly the same thing and there was a bond and comfort in being there together. Everyone was welcome. I fear the current movement to restrict library content will destroy the opportunity for today's community to have similar library experiences. What happens now to the child who is embarrassed and afraid to ask about abuse, sex, addiction, or gender identity? Should they go to the internet with no filters, confusing and frightening the child even further? History has shown over and over that fear of misinformation lead to hatred and violence. Our library director has already received threats. I have a hard time believing the people of Hillsdale truly want to follow this road when we know where it leads to quote alter Cronkite. Whatever the cost of our libraries, the price is cheap compared to that of an ignorant nation. The alternative is to allow the library with accurate information, the guidelines that are already in place and available staff for questioning, to do its job. Please do not jeopardize the community's right to intellectual freedom. The board has a duty to defend this right, as evidenced by Michigan Library Association's trustee manual, which reads, "The library board has responsibility of championing the cause of intellectual freedom, which includes fighting censorship issues." Per the Cambridge Dictionary, the word champion, championing, means to support, defend, or fight for a person, belief, right, or principle enthusiastically. Please do your job as board members and champion Hillsdale's intellectual freedom with greatest sincerity, Lynn McRichie. Any discussion about any thing?
And the Gritchy you're talking about, Mary Ann McRichie, used to be a council member here.
Yes.
They had a, because he was, I think, now with a park named after her too, Stock's Park. So she was involved in city council for years and she's a stellar lady, she's not a passed away, obviously, but she had her hands in a lot of things in this community. So I take that these are probably her daughters or definitely all of those. So the Gritchy influence is still here in this community. I just wanted to make sure we're aware of that, because she served our council when I was on council, very young. So I've been here forever.
I know, Bruce, I'm sorry for cracking the smile, but yes. Any more discussion? Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wonder, you know, um, would we want some books with nice cartoons on them and a cute little kid that's geared towards children that's called Joey's First Joint? Is that freedom of speech? Is that protected? Would you want, uh, Harry hits his first heroin?
Is that in the library?
Uh, would you want it in there? If it was created, if it was, if it existed?
That's illegal stuff.
Penny?
Sorry, he's asking.
Not, he's not.
Okay.
No conversation.
I'm sorry.
I'm just, it is, it's a question that we should ponder and we should consider. There are absolutes. You laugh, but it's not funny.
No, my goodness.
And to some of, some of us, to some of us, the lifestyles that were, um, encouraged in those books, we don't appreciate. And look at the deleterious effects that those things have had on our culture since the 1960s. Has it been a net positive? I would dare say no. And I would challenge all of you to reconsider your thoughts in promoting that type of material geared towards children and prominently displayed in their section. Is that what we want our community to advocate?
Oh my god, what a bunch of immigrants.
I would dare say no.
Not a response, if you may, when you're ready.
I, I will be ready. I'm not saying completely remove the books, but prominently display them in the children's section? It's, there's only one reason for that, and that's because they need a next generation.
Who's they?
I'll tell you when my final comments.
My concern is, back in the 1930s or so, Nazis in Germany were burning books. They were burning books. Nobody's forcing anybody to read these books. The library, if it happened, those books were there, they should have been pulled out in question. But nobody is forcing anybody to read books. Have you been on the internet? Pulled up stuff that's on the internet? There's a lot of stuff there. Are we monitoring our children on the internet? How closely are we? Because there's a lot of them out there that are not getting monitored, a lot of stuff is out there. So when you're tackling the library, you ought to be looking at Facebook and everything else that's out there. That's the biggest violator of everything here. Not our library. We've lost a good library director there because she was threatened.
I'm arguing that.
That's a sad community when people threaten people here. You wanna threaten somebody, bring it to me. I'm ready. Come on, bring it. But don't threaten somebody that's doing their job. That's sad. I'm not scared. You got something to say, come and say it to my face. I'll be more than happy to hear what you gotta say, but don't threaten people that are doing their jobs. That's a sad world. That's what I've been saying. And I'm very disappointed. When I heard about this, the first time, I didn't know anything was going on, because I work over in Coldwater, I work 10 hours a day, by the time I get home, I'm wiped. When I, first time I heard about it was on the Channel 10. I looked back, I was like, what is going on here with Hillsdale? And she said, you didn't know? I said, no, please fill me in. So she filled me in and I was shocked. Well, what's going on? I wasn't there, so I can't say what would I, what that mean, because unless I'm there to hear it personally, it's usually secondhand information. I don't want to always go by secondhand information. But there was enough people there who, we don't threaten people with their lives or anything, what they do, they're just trying to do their job. If they're wrong, they're wrong. And that's where the city manager would step in and have removed if it needs to be done. That's his job. That's what we hired him for. But give the lady a break. Give the library a chance. Social media is so out of control. It attacks us all the time. There's stuff out there, my wife censors everything, so I don't see it. And I'm so glad of that, because I'd be knocking on that person's door if I got to see it. I've had my say. I love it.
I don't think they speak too badly about you on social media, Bruce. I don't think I see that.
Oh, it's blocked.
Yeah?
It's blocked.
Can I get verification of what the threats towards the library director were? Because I keep hearing that she was threatened, but, uh, I didn't actually ever receive the information of what the threat was. Was it, uh, was it an email or phone call or people showing up at the library or, does anybody have verification of that? Okay.
So we're just going back here, so?
I don't, that's what I'm saying, I, I, she said in her letter that she was threatened, but I didn't. But at the time that the threat was made, I never got a call to say I was threatened or, so I was just curious what the actual threat was. Thank you. Because I will say, I did ask the library director to stay after the, uh, after the meeting that was so passionate. And I also asked the library board not to vote to remove Josh Palladino. So, um, just hope things calm down over there. I think, uh, passions are high and this community is a grown-up community and we can all have a conversation after everybody cools down a little bit and we can handle this, uh, I guess the grown-up way. So, not in favor of censorship any sort. I do think Josh made a mistake. I think he handled something, I, I don't think he handled that right at all. And I told him that, and he's told me himself that he thought, uh, that he probably didn't handle things the right way. But I don't think that makes him a bad man. I think that makes him a 20-something-year-old kid that made a mistake that's also under a lot of pressure and stress in his life right now. And I've been there before myself and I've been, I've sat up here as a 40-year-old man and made plenty of mistakes myself. So, you know, calling for his blood, I don't want to see that happen. And I didn't want to see the library director resign either. I went to her and I asked her, I said, please stay, you know, please, please do your part and quell this passion in the community. And she chose to go and I regret that she did, but nothing I can do about that, it's nothing any of us can do about that. Any more discussion? Councilman Morrissey?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything before us, the library board do not vote, vote us, we should take any action, we're supposed to make any action.
We can't hear you.
He said, uh, he said, he doesn't see anything, anything before us, uh, about taking any action, so he doesn't think we should take any action tonight. And we're not taking any action tonight. Uh, it's open for discussion, because some people sent some letters in and therefore it opens it up as a discussion item. Any more? Thank you, Councilman Morrissey. Any more discussion? Okay, we'll move on to the agenda. To item number D, Mrs. Stock's Parks Tuesdays and the Park Concert Series. Looks like we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven dates this summer. Very exciting stuff. If you guys haven't entered these, these are awesome. I see, uh, Bob Pogue, he's a local guy, he's gonna be at one. July 5th, Bob Pogue, Corey Champion, Nathan Wiley and Scott Donahue are having a patriotic concert. That's gonna be awesome. They do the Gospel Barn Lots, should be, should be lovely. So I encourage the community to, uh, attend one or all of these. All concerts start at 7:30 and they are free to everyone. So we will move on, well, is there any discussion on that item? We'll move on to new business, item A, adoption of fiscal year 2022-23 city budget. Dave, you wanna take this, sir?
And we do have Karen here, the finance director, so, um, so we've held our public meeting, public hearing on the, uh, 2223 budget. And as part of that, the council has to adopt the resolution as part of the packet to institute the budget starting July 1. So that is the resolution in your packet. And then the second item is, um, the resolution actually making the levies, um, for the budget. So those are the two items that need to be adopted, uh, for the budget to take effect.
Okay, we've had plenty of conversation about the budget, but does anybody have anything to add? Entertained motion to adopt the budget?
Uh huh, sure.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Stutchel. Can I have a roll call, City Clerk?
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stutchel?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sizer?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Councilperson Soha?
Yes.
And Beer?
Yes.
Okay, that's all approved and that's resolution 3503.
Thank you, Katie. Item number B is the fee schedule update. Oh, sorry, Dave. Okay. Second item is, uh, to levy the village that the residents voted on.
Left for, for all, for all villages as part of our collection.
Okay.
Was this what, 19.5 or something?
Yes. Yeah, I remember that number.
So it includes the general property tax, levy the leaf collection and road village, the library village, um, the public safety village. So that's what it all includes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to levy the villages?
Uh huh.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. May I please have a roll call, vote, City Clerk?
Councilperson Sharp?
Yep.
Stutchel?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sizer?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Councilperson Soha?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
And Morrissey?
Yes.
That's all approved, resolution 3503.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move on to item B and new business, the fee schedule update. Another resolution. Uh, Dave?
So this is just updating, um, some of our, our fee schedule. The last time it was updated was 2019, so it's been a number of years and they're all pretty modest, um, but some increases were made nonetheless due to actual costs involved in processing. So if there's any specific questions, I'll take those, otherwise we recommend, um, passing the upgrade, their updated, uh, fee resolution. Like for example, uh, right-of-way permit, we're currently charging $10, we doubled that to 20. $10 doesn't cover any, anything and 20 doesn't really either, so we're just trying to get it, uh, get it up there a little bit more, um, to cover the costs.
Any discussion of questions for Dave? Do I have a motion to update the fee schedule?
Well, I have some reservations about that grave opening, given my great age, but I'll do. I'll, 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 I'll move it.
And I'm second behind you on age, so I'll support it.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Sharp. May I please have a roll call, City Clerk?
Sure. Councilperson Stutchel?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sizer?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
No.
Councilperson Soha?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yep.
That's 71, approved and resolution 3505.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move on to item C, BPU cost of service and rate design for electric, water, and sewer. Dave?
Sure.
Is Jake not gonna call?
Um, Jake's on vacation.
Ah.
He's the chief, so that's why he's not here either, so.
Got it.
Um, so on, on this, this was a study that the, the BPU board instituted. Um, so on, on this, this was a study that the, the VPU board instituted to look at our rates, uh, for the upcoming years. It looks at the budgets, our capital projects, and it weighs all those in determining how we, how financially set we are and how we're set to move forward with our rate, our rate package. So, um, what you have before you are a, a rate, um, structure for twenty, starting in July of twenty-two, going through July of twenty-six. The average between all three utilities, three point nine percent annually, which is very, very affordable. Utility standpoint, most utilities, like consumers and others, are well over, are over ten percent annually. So combined are three, are, uh, average three point nine percent. And for the average, um, residential household, that's about six dollars a month is what that will equate to. Um, but, uh, like the electric department is at one percent. Water and sewer are at, uh, five and ten percent, uh, each. So when you average them out, it comes out to three point nine percent. So, and about six dollars a month for the average household. So the, the VPU board has reviewed the, the rate package as well as the staff, and we're recommending that council adopt the rate structures next seven years. Through July of twenty-six.
Through July of twenty-six? Any discussion on this item? Councilman Soha?
Mr. Mackey, I was just curious with inflation being so high and the costs of goods and services going up. I was wondering if this becomes, if the budget in the next three or five years starts to show signs of weakness because of the extra cost they'll incur.
We did, or the, the rate study folks you have asked, did take into account a higher, uh, cost of inflation in the economy. I believe it was five percent is what they, they took it at, but...
So that's been at least thought about and considered?
Yes, correct.
Correct.
VPU's a business. That's all I can say. It's a business. Any more discussion? Councilman Beer?
Uh, what's the pilot that we, the city receives from VPU? Is that a percent?
Six.
It is a percent, it's six percent, like.
Okay.
All right, so I'm just, so it's gonna go up accordingly.
Any more discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Beer, seconded by Councilman Stucho. May I please have a roll call vote?
Councilwoman Pratt?
Yes.
Councilperson Sizer?
Yes.
Mayor Sockford?
Yes.
Councilperson Soha?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
And Stucho?
Yes.
All approved, eight zero.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move on to item D, purchase agreement for storm water control facility, 50 Mori Street. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as part of the, um, South Howl, uh, Mori, Minwood project, um, we are going to, um, we are scheduled to do some work to alleviate the flooding that's at that intersection, which is pretty profound. Um, the most affordable method was determined to be actually purchasing a lot owned by Dr. Herger there at, at that intersection, creating a retention basin. So the water that normally floods on the roads will go into retention basin and seep into the ground. We've done the engineering work as part of the ARPA money that we, how we used it. So, uh, this is that first step in getting this work done, which is actually quite a lot. So that's what this purchase is for that part.
Okay. We're gonna fix that street down there this year, right?
Yes, that is our...
So we should probably do this, that way?
Yeah, this goes first and then the streets go after that.
Very good. Any discussion, questions? Bruce wants to know how big the lot is. Oh, sorry, Dave?
I can get that for you, Bruce. It's not a We did, we did evaluate the cost based on what he paid for it.
Any more discussion or questions? Entertained a motion to approve the purchase?
So moved.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Beer, seconded by Councilman Soha. May I please have a roll call vote, City Clerk?
Councilperson Sizer?
Yes.
Mayor Sockford?
Yes.
Councilperson Soha?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stucho?
Yes.
And Pratt? All approved, eight zero.
Thank you, Katie. All right, we'll move on to new business, item number E. This is good news. Dave, sale of the city's solid waste transfer station.
So yes, uh, we were approached, um, by Modern Waste about purchasing the, um, transfer station in 425 Carroll Road, which are currently leasing from us, um, as, as part of their trash collection system. The purchase price that they're, that has been discussed, negotiated, is eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, they presented us with a purchase offer, um, which that has subsequently been sent to our city attorney for review. And so we're in that process. During this process, the Finance Committee has discussed the possibility of selling this as well as the Community Development Committee. And both committees, uh, expressed support or favor of making, making the sale. So right, what we have on the agenda here is just, uh, for councils to, to motion to, to whether the full council is for, for moving forward with a transaction of pen, uh, pending final, uh, purchase agreement approval and then amended refuse, refuse agreement. So we just wanna know if we wanna continue moving this forward and working out the sale.
Councilman Stucho? It's annoying.
Yes, I mean, people get their stuff, you know, they're all got their stuff out, and you're like, you wanna get this, oh, they have to all that out?
Yeah, yeah. It's not like there are jewelers where you can say, "Well, I'm going somewhere else." I mean, you could go to Jackson Township, but this is our transfer station, so.
Mr. Mackey, well, the, the final resolution will come back before this.
So this is just, do we want, want to continue this forward?
Well, when we went to Modern, we, uh, when we went to Modern, we were Republican in the past, and they kept raising our rates. Modern, we locked in for five years. And that was a good thing for all of us, because Republicans just keep going up, going up, going up. Here, we should have a chance to sell the property and get out from the liabilities of it. Because if somebody gets hurt there right now, it's the city and Modern's responsibility. Once we're out from under it, then it's not our responsibility anymore. So it's a good deal for us to be the way to look at it. So hopefully, we can move forward.
Thank you, Bruce. Councilman Beer?
Uh, this is one for David. Uh, David, would the city, uh, find any savings on their insurance? If we get rid of that, I would think there's a liability concern, it seems like, maybe our, our rates might differ.
There, there might be some savings there and, you know.
There should be additional tax revenue, right?
Well, we pay, and we pay tax on it because we're collecting rent from it, so there's tax already being paid.
Okay.
But as they, you know, continue to improve it or expand it, which I think they're hoping to, um, that could increase the tax. Because there is a lot in front of us, a lot that's not paid, depending what they want to have.
Well, the contamination study has been done around that place, or we already pointed that?
Um, I'm not sure if it's part of the new purchase agreement or not.
Something you wanna look into, because we already have enough, looted ground around this city built up from the old factories, especially that area. Something needed to be checked.
I mean, it's a dump. There's probably some nasty stuff out there. Any more questions or discussion on this item? So can we get a motion of support?
So moved. Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Beer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Good news, I think. Item number F in new business, submission of grant application for funds from the Transportation Economic Development Fund.
All right, I'll take this one again. Um, so as part of our grant policy, we've adopted, um, here in the last several months, any grants over ten thousand dollars, just like, uh, giveaways or items that were purchased with previous city council for their, we will move forward on. Uh, this particular one is we are applying for a grant that will allow us to do, uh, three point seven five miles of chip seal. And we ran this for about half of the cost. So that's why we're bringing it forward, is we would like to submit a grant application, um, to, to do three point seven five miles of chip seal.
Chip seal? Awesome. Any questions for Dave?
Which streets? Don't hold it up. It says, it says. Um, Dave, what, uh, the micro, micro servicing tape seal, what, what, is that a, an advanced type of?
It's an advanced type of chip seal to get a little more life out of. And it's for more of your, uh, streets that are maybe a little bit more
Norwood.
More.
Norwood.
For example, um, I'm gonna turn this one here, let's see this. So we're talking about, this is a, a, a concept that we, we can use on Marion Street, which is dirt, right? So they can do this dou, double process of this, and I think they can get a fair amount of wear on it. The chipped road.
Yeah. Right. Is that, is that what you call the chipped road? That's the difference.
Well, theirs is dirt.
Theirs is dirt, yeah.
What this would do is get it to a chipped, chipped, uh, level.
Any improvements to Marion? I see Elville's on there. I mean, this is great stuff.
Yeah, so, so these are more, some of the areas that we've had substantial issues with. They're more, you know, they're, they're not paved or not, they don't have anything on them. So we're saving, we'll be saving on maintenance and then try to get, try to get them to last as long as we can.
What I'm most familiar with is West Street, two sections of West Street. They are in very poor condition, right?
So these are mostly the ones that are in very poor condition.
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering, Mr. Mackey, uh, South Street, it appears doesn't include the worst part of it, between West and Manning. Is there any way to add that or include it?
Um, I can, I can ask about it.
That's one of the worst, and it's heavily traveled.
Oh, absolutely agree. I knew we talked about it by Navy School, and that was just a joke.
We talk about that often, so, I mean, I'll inquire about that.
Thank you.
All right, great stuff. Any more discussion, questions? Motion to, uh, submit the application?
So moved.
Sorry.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll move on to
Item G, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That's what we're moving on to.
No, you're okay. New business, item G, citywide trash pickup discussion. Councilman Sharp?
I would like to, now we're coming into this money that we've recently come into. Jonesville and Litchfield, over the years, have done a citywide trash pickup. Jonesville, just before Riverfest. They don't have the canoe race anymore, but they still have Riverfest. Litchfield Sweet Corn Days, they do this. They offer a service where they go around and say, certain items you are allowed to put on the curb, and they will take it away. It could be like the famous thing around Hillsdale lately, there's been mattresses, chairs, whatever else along the curb, you see that. I don't know if any person in their right mind's gonna pick up a mattress and take it home with them in their right mind. But they put it out there. I, since my life, yeah, I don't know why people do that. But we do have stuff that we need to get rid of, and some people use the excuse, "Well, I don't have a pickup truck. I have no means to get it to the dump." Or "I'm just too cheap to take it there, and I'm just gonna leave it there in my backyard and just let it grow." We need to offer a service here where they don't have that excuse. I say it's time that we go back, like we did in the past, years back, we had a citywide trash pickup. Offer that service again. Yes, Gary, I hear. My wife's the one that really yelled at me about doing this. So I propose to council, we look into doing this again. And do it for three, five years, see how it works out, see if we can pick up some of this blight in this town. Take away the excuse, they don't, they can't use that excuse. And maybe they'll mow their lawns too, because I know there's some people in my ward that have got their lawn mower still yet. And they got all kinds of trash around there. I want to take, I hope we can take it to the Community Development Committee and have them look at it and go forward with it. It may cost us fifty thousand dollars the first year, but that's waste for getting out of here. And anytime you put something to the curb, before that night, that night before, you may have people come by and actually pick it up and take it. You just never know. But we need to give something back to you citizens, because we've been hitting you guys for everything lately. Now the rates increases on utility cost, here we go again. But I'd like to see us give something back to the community, so we can put something out there, get rid of some of this trash, try and clean up this community and make it look a little better. And that's what I propose.
I think it's a good idea, Bruce, and I think you're right. I think, you know, we sold pieces of the industrial park, and we're selling the transfer station now, and, uh, we should
We got some money.
Use some of that money to do something for the community besides just, I know we're fixing streets. We're fixing streets for fixing streets for fixing streets. The issue with that is when people don't get their own street fixed on, they really don't care if you're fixing streets or not. So unfortunately, as I've learned the hard way. But, uh, I think it's a great idea. Community development? Pursue.
In fact, Councilman Sharp and Mayor, Community, Community Development did speak about this at their last meeting, uh, a week and a half ago, and they were in, in favor of, um, looking into it some more and trying to see if we can get, get something out of it, so, so.
Well, obviously, there's gonna be a list of things you can't put out there. Like a pickup truck or something like that. You can't put it out the curb. Or batteries, stuff like that, but other stuff, you know, not dead bodies. There's, uh, there is stuff that people's yard you look at, and if they had a reason to get it there, that would, I think, would help clean up this community. And give something back to this community, because God, we've been asking for a lot from this community lately. We gotta give them something back.
I like it. Any more discussion? Motion descended to, uh, Community Development? Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll move on. Miss Lani's reports? Okay, we'll move on. Miss Lani's reports?
No proclamations. We've got three appointments. Uh, one is Tammy Henderson to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, Ms. Henderson reached out to me, wanted to get involved in the city somehow. I said, send in a application, we'll find a place for you. We've got a lot of vacancies on the ZBA. Actually, another one that just, uh, happened, because Mr. Bruins asked me if he could join the Airport Advisory Committee. And, uh, I said, well, you're already on board. He said, well, they never meet. I want to get some work in, so I said, okay. Submit your, uh, letter of resignation to the ZBA, and I'll move you to the Airport Advisory Committee, which meets at least four times. So. And then Mr. Bracato was a recommendation, believe he's a pilot, is that right? To the Airport Advisory Committee, so. Any questions about any of these characters? Entertained a motion to make the appointments? Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Soha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And welcome to your new boards, uh, Ms. Henderson, Mr. Bracato, and Mr. Bruins. We'll move into general public comment. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium, and during this time, you may speak on anything your heart desires. Podium's now open.
Jack McLean, um, Moore Street property, um, that's going to lose your ten thousand dollars, right? Because he's not going to pay us five thousand dollars to have the road fixed. I mean, because he's on the corner lot. So you're going to want to figure that into your purchase price a little bit, because you're going to lose ten grand there. Who paid to rebuild the transfer station? Who paid to rebuild the transfer station? So you guys got how much money in that? Two fifty? Okay, I'm just, you know, I know eight hundred thousand sounds like a lot, but if you guys put four hundred in it, then you'll only get half of it. Trash pickup. Uh, Hillsdale Township does one every year. We don't do a pickup, we do it at the fire department on vacant. We get, well, this year we had four, uh, thirty-yard dumpsters in there. Uh, we have a guy come out with a backhoe that packs it down for us. We, we opened at eight, and nine thirty we were full. And so he packed it down, packed it down, packed it down, and went until two thirty. Uh, as far as not wanting to take trucks, which, when we do that, we also get with the local junkyard, and the firefighters do scrap iron, which they, this year they made seven hundred dollars. I mean, if people are going to haul it to you, why not take it? You know, we might be able to work something out with the fire department. The volun- the firefighters volunteer to help unload stuff. You know, they could do a scrap iron drive, you could do a ward at the time, you know, and we do it on a Saturday from eight to three. And it really works good for the township. Anything we don't take is tires unless they're cut up. If they're cut up, we can take them. Everything else we take. I mean, it goes to Modern or Republic, one or the other. I mean, and they pick it up. I mean, like I say, the batteries we do to Lake Pleasant Recycling and all the scrap iron, so. With, uh, removing of people from the TIPA, I think if you're going to do that, which, that's fine. You need to look at people that are on the TIPA board or on council that are violating the zoning by having short-term rentals in the core of downtown, which is not legal, that are doing that. I mean, that's no different than, I mean, it's costing money, it's costing parking spaces uptown for people. Uh, one of the zoning things is, uh, there isn't in the core in the edge of the town, there's no, no lodging. So you can't really, I mean, you can have a hotel and stuff, you can do Airbnb.
Jack, your time's up, audience. Thank you. It really is.
No, I, oh, can I come back? I, well, she did, so why can't I?
Got me, Jack.
I forgot, so.
You're right about the transfer station. Costs us money to do a upgrades and do work on it, but it's like with anything else that you own. In five years, we're going to be doing more upgrades, paying more.
No, I agree, I just.
The difference between renting and owning, so.
No, I agree with you.
Let them do the upgrades from now on.
Just need to do one at the airport.
Any more public comment?
Yeah, I'm Carla, Ward Four. Uh, a few years ago, I wrote the court system on the Hope House. Um, they had no running hot water for over six weeks. The people were taking a bath in the lake. Uh, people were relapsing and dying, um, in my eyes, nobody was getting the treatment that they deserved. It was a joke at that point. It wasn't until it landed in the city's downtown area that all of a sudden it became a problem. It's been a problem the whole time. The system is a failure. The entire system is a failure. You sit here making laws, passing judgment, while you pretend that everything is great. You forget about the generations that you're taxed to death, literally. You say it's about free speech, it's about hatred towards each other and humankind. And, um, I don't know the way out of it, but I know sitting behind a desk and pretending that everybody's so important and that we're nothing isn't the way to do it. Pointing fingers and trying to take somebody else's position is also not the way to do it. Freedom of speech is freedom of speech. If you want to have lesbian gay books, why don't we have bomb-making books? And I'll kill you because I don't like you, because that's what this is coming to. Whatever happens to just being human? I tell you what happened. The almighty dollar, the almighty control system, and it's failed. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Any more public comment?
Hello. Okay, so I just have a few comments in regards to this meeting tonight. Mr. Stockford. Uh, Brianna, she obviously said that she was threatened in her letter, that was, hmm, a week and a half ago now. Um, so you didn't feel it necessary to maybe ask her? I mean, if you were really concerned about her safety, you didn't think maybe that would have been a good idea to ask her prior to tonight? But it feels like you were more concerned with defending Josh than actually making sure that she was safe. Maybe that's why she doesn't feel valued. Just like to point that out. Uh, Mr. Stuccio. I found it funny that you were laughing at the recollection of Mr. Palladino's comments, uh, at the last library board meeting where he said that he was not held to the ethical standards and only upheld to the constitution, because for anybody to laugh at, um, and, and having blatant refusal to follow an ethical guideline is not a redeeming quality. Okay, so for somebody to laugh at the fact that they have to follow ethics? Come on. Okay. Now, Mr. Socha, Soha, sorry, I have seen your incredibly homophobic garbage blog, okay? Uh, I'm one of the lesbians that you, you know, referenced, uh, since according to you, only lesbians would take the time to stand against Palladino. Someone really should let my husband know that, um, because, you know, that's news to me. But anyways, you fabricated a reference to a non-existent book, but how about we compare it with some real books? I'm not a Christian. A lot of people aren't, and yet there are over seventeen hundred books about Christianity in that library as opposed to a hundred and sixty-six that reference LGBTQ. How would you feel if the tables were turned, uh, and we were demanding the removal of all Christian-related books from the children's section? What about the Bible? Uh, what if, you know, the Bible contains murder, incest, rape? What if I said I felt Christianity breeds nothing but hatred and that children shouldn't be exposed to it? That's my opinion, just like you're entitled to your opinion. Stop demanding that, to dictate what my children have access to according to your beliefs, when you damn well know you would throw a fit if I tried the same. My interest is raising my children to be understanding, accepting, and kind humans. The rest is up to them to decide who they are, and I'm okay with my children picking up a book about your religion to understand your kids. Why do you simply refuse to allow the same for other people's kids? Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Any more public comment?
I'm just trying to figure out how to get through.
Hi, I'm Brianna Drell. I am Ward Four. Thank you for reading my letter. Um, I'm not here for Palladino's blood. I'm not saying he's a horrible person. My heart positively aches for what his family is going through with his daughter. My issue was the letter that he sent out with baseless lies. That was my issue. The lies were debunked at the board meeting. I take issue that after that, his buddy, I don't remember, Josiah, wrote a letter calling Brianna a groomer and attaching her picture to it, saying that she encouraged the need, what was it? The voluntary genital mutilation of children. Attaching her picture and the child, and the children's librarian. That's where she said she felt unsafe. That's what I have a problem with. And then Soha, my goodness, Jimmy hits a joint. Have you looked at the books? You're talking about To Kill a Mockingbird. You're talking about The Giver, the book that Palladino referenced, has sex in it. Like, this is ridiculous. You're acting like the library doesn't have a pornography clause. They have an obscenity clause. Those are not the books that are in there. That's not what people are saying. He flat-out said his issue was with a book that contained two dads. That's what the issue was. The new agenda shows that our library board president is quitting because he was so blindsided by what happened. That's what I'm referring to. That's what I'm saying. And so I don't understand also where you're saying, you know, Mr. Mayor Stockford, you say that Brianna should have stayed to quell the passions. Did you tell Palladino to start quelling the passions? He's the one who said, I need you to go, to stand in for me because I can't be there. I, I just am thinking of these things. I mean, they use, I've worked in the library. There is a standard for books. There is the children's books, which is birth to six. There is the junior books, which is seven to thirteen. There is young adult books, which starts at about fourteen, fifteen, and goes to eighteen, and then there's the adult books. The banned book display, have you been there? It's in the adult section. It's not by the children's section. You walk into the library and you exit this way. That librarian did a wonderful job, and the previous librarians, of keeping things segregated. Nobody is advocating for Fifty Shades of Grey to be in your children's section. Also, children should not be there by the library policy if they're under ten without an adult. Like, the inciting of the fear and just telling people there's porn in the children's library, I find that absolutely ridiculous and uneducated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brianna. Any more public comment?
Hello, Stephanie Meyer, Ward One. As the council meeting moves forward, obviously passions are very, very high. And as somebody who has spent the better part of the last decade working with youth in Hillsdale County, I would just like to respectfully ask council, as you move forward with your comments, to keep in mind that the children that are in our community are paying more attention to what you're saying than you think. These are things that our children discuss on a regular basis, right now in Hillsdale community or Hillsdale County schools. The language that you use, the things that you are saying about these children matters. So please, think about the comments that you are using when you are describing the families, and I understand that, excuse me, I understand that everyone has differing views and differing opinions, and maybe your view and opinion is coming from a different moral standpoint than mine. But keep in mind that in the state of Michigan, it is estimated that seven to nine percent of youth identify as part of the LGBTQ community. When we're talking about LGBTQ youth, they have a four times more likely rate of suicide and suicide ideation than students that do not identify as LGBTQ. So please, as this meeting moves forward, and as you all are discussing the comments that were just made, keep in mind that these are kids that are right here in our community that are listening to the things that they, you are saying about them. And whether you agree or not, be mindful of the language that you are using, because these are our kids. From twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, we had forty-three suicides in Hillsdale County. Some of those were young people. So just keep that in mind as the conversation moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any more public comment?
That's Rob Eichler, City of Township. The greatest thing I could listen to was tonight, listening to you folks. I'm going to hopefully get a replay of this. Now, uh, Mayor, in consideration to anyone and all, as what's on this board, uh, anyone who is handicapped, I'd like to hear your, uh, discussion, at least bring it up for discussion, on those who are handicapped, to giving them the extension of time of one or two minutes, or if you recognize anyone here that is handicapped, to do so. I'm just asking if you would put it up for discussion and, you know, breathe forward. I'd bring that up to the county commissioners as well, and the, uh, Health Department, excuse me. The last I've, I'm, I'm really trying to look at is some of the, uh, numbers that you guys have bought, you know, for BPU, and now we're going to be looking at some new taxes being brought up by the county as well, um, that have been allowed, uh, I want to say allowed, because it has kind of been pushed to get this three-quarters, uh, of milk brought forward, and it's going to be somewhat costly over a fourteen-year period. But also, there's, uh, various bonds increases and such as the fees it's going to be taking. So I'm just saying the repercussions that we can look at coming up forwards, and we've already been noticing all of these, uh, price increases as a runaway. Uh, no one has control. No one knows who's going to do what next, and simply we need to find out what we can do. I would encourage, I heard your statement about people's lawns not being able to get mowed, or hasn't been, and I would like to say, hey, if we're going to increase taxes, don't mow your lawn, no matter what the penalties might be. Anyway, thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Bob. Any more public comment?
So Tracy Cutler, Jefferson Township in the county, so I want to be clear, my pronouns are she, her, and hers. Identifies as cisgender heterosexual female, and I think that's important to recognize as I address Mr. Soha and the remainder of the board. I'm going to use your words, Mr. Soha. I don't appreciate, that's what you said in your comments. I'm going to tell you what I don't appreciate as a community member. I don't appreciate your verbiage of lifestyles. Can't even say it. You really mean you don't appreciate human life, or unless it's what you say it should be. Being gay, lesbian, or otherwise gender queer is perfectly natural. It's been around since time began. And we're in fact celebrating Pride Month, focused on love and acceptance. Sprinkle a little glitter on yourself, Mr. Soha, and celebrate love and acceptance. And for you, Mr. Mayor, that love and acceptance is how this community heals. I've heard that from the speakers in this comment section, right? It is not forgetting. It is not neutrality, which only helps the oppressor. That's how this will settle down. I don't appreciate, Mr. Soha, the notion that you get to somehow be the moral compass of this community. You, who wrote recently about bringing in lesbians to the library meeting, because for sure they aren't from here, try to be a member of the community. Try to get outside of your group think circle. We are a diverse, beautiful community. You might actually like us. You might actually learn something from us. After all, you came here to be part of this community. Maybe try it. Your next generation statement, say it silently, but out loud. You met cut-off files and groomers, right? Because, because that's the dog whistle you use right now. That's the dog whistle your group uses, right? Your statement shows you're complete lack of factual knowledge. Learn what grooming is and how it happens. Eighty percent of it starts with families. Stop choosing which kids to get protected. When you take resources away from youth, and yes, I mean books, they can find themselves in the street, feeling stigmatized, no place to go. This makes them easy prey, vulnerable to trafficking. That's how kids get trafficked. Having survival sex, which opens them to a whole host of health and violence issues. It's not their fault, but you'll blame them. That's a community failure that you're perpetuating, that you're perpetuating. This community, Mr. (laugh) Oh, this, Mr. Mayor, is why this will not settle down. We will not be apathetic. Mr. Zeizer, save it. You've been on your phone all night. I don't know if you've heard anything that's going on tonight. Neutrality only helps the oppressor. A twenty-something who made a mistake doesn't learn without accountability and guidance. You have chosen to do nothing. That's on you as a group. That's on you as a group. I'm asking the board to move forward. Further conversation in removing Mr. Palladino from the library board.
Thank you, Tracy.
You're very welcome, Mr. Tracy.
I'm not neutral.
You are neutral.
But you are not calling for love and acceptance. You're calling for somebody's head.
I am calling for accountability.
You're calling for a sacrifice, Tracy.
You don't get to engage in this way. I am the president of the podium.
I'm actually leaving this meeting. I can't engage in this way. It's my turn to talk. Your time's up. Three minutes is up. Your time's up. Three minutes is up.
Well, don't ask me questions or I'm gonna need more time.
I'm not asking you questions. I'm giving you a statement. You're not calling for love and acceptance. You're calling for a sacrifice. You're calling for somebody to be spread across the altar and pay for the things they said.
No, no, this is why neutrality, sir, is where you sit. Get off the fence, 'cause that hole in the hem ain't gonna like you any better when you're, when you're on that mayor seat. So the fact that you wanna stand up for them.
Excuse me, madam.
You look stupid. You look stupid. And, Mr. Soha, welcome to the community. We are diverse and we are.
You're not even welcome in Hillsdale, lady.
Mr. Sizer.
All right. Tracy, please have a seat and let's move on to public comment. Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Any more public comment?
Mark Nichols, Adams Township. I'm a little discouraged with members of the public and especially officials that will tell someone they're not even from this community because this is public comment time. And anyone, if they're in order, can come talk. That being said, um, I thank all you board members for serving. It's something many, many people don't do. And we don't always agree on everything. Um, Mr. Soha, I appreciate your thoughts. People have kinda blasted you this evening. I think you raised an issue that would give one pause to consider, just how far, how far we're gonna go. When our nation was founded, John Jay was our first Supreme Court Justice. And he said we should prefer Christians as leaders. I think we've kinda forgotten maybe what a Christian would be because we, we've taken the, the idea with the Bible, which is God's word. And you can deny that. That's your right. Deny that. But it's an old, old book written by many authors over many years. And there are certain things that are condemned in there. It's unpleasing to God. And if we're to be a moral society and prefer Christians, we might get statements like Mr. Soha said. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you that, that you try to find a middle road when it can, can be found. So, I appreciate you thinking deeply about this topic. And Brianna, the librarian, felt threatened. That's unfortunate. I didn't personally experience that. Could've been done. There could've been statements made. Um, but when we put ourselves in a position of leadership, public office, we gotta be, gotta get tough sometimes, take a little bit of abuse, a little bit of comments. People don't always understand. If they understood the whole picture, they might not say what they say. I think on this library issue that there's been some knee-jerk reactions. There's been some misrepresentation of, of what was intended. So, it's a work in progress, I think. And, uh, until he does something grossly wrong, I would hope this board would support Joshua. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mark. Any more public comment?
Good evening, council. Doug Engels, County Commissioner. Um, I attend meetings, um, with the county commissioners as well. And I enjoy seeing the interaction of, of the council. And I can assure you that when I'm at a meeting, I'm working off my iPad, I'm working off my phone, sometimes I'm working off a laptop. I'm either Googling a statute that I don't understand, something that was being talked about. I'm looking at a past email. Sometimes I get an email from a department head during the meeting to help it answer a question as it's ongoing in the discussion. So I'm encouraged when I see, um, council persons using technology. I understand that that technology is help, is what helps us be good representatives of those that, um, have put us in our elected seats. So that is my public comment at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any more public comment? Seeing done, we'll move into the city manager's report. David.
Mayor, I do not have a report for this evening.
Very good. We'll move into council comment. Anybody have anything interesting?
I would say it's interesting.
Thanks, Mr. Sizer.
A point of clarification. I'm not, uh, prescriptively saying that people from here shouldn't be allowed to speak. I'm saying that when the proceeding line was to lecture a member of this council who ran for representative ward in this city about whether or not he's a part of the community, you're out of order. It was an asinine point. Don't tell someone who actually lives here that he's the one that's not part of the community because you don't like his political or social opinions. I have those political and social opinions I don't like every day. That's part of being a grown-up. Just try that.
Can I just clarify something? That Hillsdale Township and Jefferson Township both have contracts with the library and both of us live in those.
That's, now we're getting into mandates. Oh, we should solve the Michigan Public Manual of Libraries. And maybe they could.
We pay taxes for the library. We have every right to be here.
I'm, no one's saying you don't have the right to be here.
Land Show.
Okay, council comment time. Any more comments?
Uh, PA system, are we still working on that?
It's in the budgets.
It's in the budget, but are we, do we actually have somebody lined up for that that possibly will be able to tackle it?
Um, we don't. Well, we're, we're getting one more bid, which we're hoping to have in the next week or so, as play, um, Playford, from Playford Music. And we wait for him and then just close his shop down. So we hopefully should have that soon.
Okay, so once that's behind me, folks, then I'm gonna go after the trash pickup 'cause I go after one thing at a time and I don't give up till I can. And Danny knows that.
I appreciate that, Chris.
So, but yes, the PA system, I'm working on it, Penny. Thank God for not shutting the air conditioner off today. I appreciate that.
I was gonna get shot if I did. Haze!
Any more council comment? Councilman Soha?
For far too long, the homosexual agenda has been at the forefront of the national dialogue and controlled the narrative in favor of their debauched lifestyle choices, feigning discrimination and demanding special rights and privileges. Patiently and deliberately, those who advocate for this unnatural behavior continually encroach on parents' rights to raise their tradition, their children in traditionally married, husband and wife, wholesome, virtuous, monogamous families. They cry foul when people dare to speak out against their immorality and then publicly shame and attack their detractor's character, spinning the portrayal to their perpetrated virtue. A striking oddity in their adamant and common vulgar repudiation of those who defy their tactics and lifestyle choices. For example, they declare a right to same-sex relations but openly mock and embarrass the opposition as if their abnormal behavior trumps the desires of those who choose to live and raise their children as naturally designed. They are the actual exhibitors of intolerance. I receive challenges inquiring if my viewpoint represents the homosexuals living in my district. In response, I ask how my perspective infringes on homosexuals' lifestyle choices. It does not. Homosexuals are not entitled to special rights and privileges nor targeted representation. They do not deserve to have their grooming materials geared toward little children prominently displayed in our public library. They are not victims except of their own choices. I also want to declare that I did not abandon my faith and principles when I ran for the city council. I do not have the support, have to support behavior that I consider abhorrent. However, my conscience demands that I warn those whom I believe to be making damnable decisions. I would be the ultimate hypocrite if I didn't warn them that such behavior will not inherit the kingdom of God, and encourage them that there is hope to be washed, sanctified, and justified in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. I espouse that the best and healthiest lifestyle choices are for one man to marry one woman and for the two to live monogously until death. I encourage their being fruitful and multiplying, to train their children in the way they should go, to fear and seek the Lord. I believe this to be healthy and sustainable. I advocate for the defense and promotion of traditional marriage and family and removing books promoting homosexuality from the children's section to the library's adult section. Then parents have a greater chance of deciding if the material is appropriate for their family. Perhaps the community should've been more outspoken before this pent-up frustration boiled over. We should be actively involved in our civic responsibilities. However, I understand the hesitation of those opposing the homosexual agenda because of the fear of being publicly malign. Nevertheless, the current engagement requires action and an accurate representation of our community's time-honored values, including promoting materials geared toward that venerable institution of traditional marriage. I understand the library board chair, librarian, and children's librarian who all resigned due to this political theater. It is an unfortunate consequence. And I add, I am completely appalled that there was any threat of violence. I was not aware of that until tonight, and I condemn those actions. However, as far as Mr. Palladino is concerned, I favor retaining him on the library board should he continue to serve.
Thank you, Robert. Councilman Stuccio?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna echo what, what Councilman Soha just said. The love of Christ. Not everyone is a Christian. But as Christians, we are commanded, commanded to, uh, to share the good news. And that's what we try to do. And we fight for this moral decay of this conscience. And we're not commanded to stop your lifestyle, but we are, we are commanded to share the good news. And if we don't, just, just stop and think about where, where we're going. First of all, just a few, this last weekend, it was the moral, we have one day that would honor our fallen nerds in this nation. Yet now, we have a whole month of fighting.
Spring rolls.
We have a whole month, and it's the only sin that I know that we celebrate in our public streets. So we're just trying to fight what we're commanded to do. And what's, and we already have drag story out in children. It's not necessarily here, but there's drag queen story out. We have men competing in women's sports. And we now have a Supreme Court Justice who could not give you the definition of a woman. There is a decay. And us as Christians and the good people need to stand up and be heard. Because this is just, I mean, like, there's one, there's one scripture verse, I guess I wrote. I'm trying to remember what it is, but it's basically, it says, "The road to hell is wide. It's highway." And the highway to hell.
This isn't a church, Bobby.
The highway to hell is broad, and the gates are wide.
Get off the cross, Mr. Stuccio. We need firewood.
So anyway, like I said, we're not, we're not all Christians.
Mayor, you need, this is neutrality, Bobby. Listen to this.
This is enough. He's speaking. It's his turn.
And we're just trying, as Christians, we're just trying.
This isn't a church. Separation of churches, Satan.
And one last thing, every, every council meeting, every single council, every.
Give sense. Don't give sense.
Under God.
Everybody up here stood up.
First, I need every. Under God.
Thank you, Councilman Stuccio.
This is out of control. We're not getting anywhere, so I think we're just.
I'll second that. Postman on the floor, Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. All in favor?
Oh, aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilperson Soha?
No.
Writer? Here?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sizer?
Yes.
Seven, one.
I will, yes.
Mr. Sturrock?
I like the new billboard. It looks nice.